Good evening and welcome to the September 14, 2020 meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-408-650-3123 and enter access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at goToMeeting.com/join/235235861. I can now confirm that all members of the Board of Selectmen are present, myself as chairman, Tristan LaLiberty, vice chairman, members Daniel Capinta, excuse me, Lionel Berthium, and Scott Ren, along with the town manager, assistant town manager, and the administrative assistant who will be taking the minutes. Our first, all votes will be taken by a roll call vote as they have to be heard. So no raising of the hands for votes, please. The first item we have of public hearings and presentations, we have none. We have no communications. Actually, the only communication that we have came in that the town manager just referenced Town Council's letter regarding a future agenda item. If we need to start when that agenda item comes up, I'll give board members time to read that letter. On the Board of Selectmen general items, we have a discussion and potential vote on the Auburn Housing Authority vote not to allow remote participation meetings and the Board of Selectmen's appointee to the authority. So as members know, the Board of Selectmen had an appointment to fill a vacancy on the Auburn Housing Authority. We made our appointment and have since learned that the resident who we appointed has some concerns because she cannot participate in person in the meetings. Having informed the chairman of the Housing Authority of that, he told her he would get back to her, and we've been informed that the Housing Authority took a vote to not to allow remote participation. I'm going to ask the town manager to just speak on this just for a minute because I've looked for the agenda posting and I looked for the recording of the meeting, and I have been unable to find the actual vote that was taken. So Mrs. Jacobson, have you been able to find any further information on this?
Through the chair to the members of the Board of Selectmen. Likewise, I wanted to be able to give the Board more information for their discussion tonight, so I also tried to find something on YouTube or Auburn Cable Television, any type of recording of the meeting, so I could watch it ahead of time. I couldn't find a recording, so I contacted Chris Hugo, our cable manager, who explained that he covers meetings that are actually posted at the clerk's office. So we contacted the clerk's office, and we were informed that initially the Housing Authority had given an agenda and a meeting posting to the clerk's office, but it wasn't signed, which is required under the law. So the clerk's office got back to the Housing Authority and explained that they couldn't post it until they received a signed copy of the agenda posting. And apparently that never came in the day of the meeting. So technically, the meeting was not posted, so therefore it was not covered by cable television.
Before I open it up to board members, and certainly there would need to be a discussion on this, if the meeting wasn't posted, you've checked with the town clerk's office and it wasn't duly posted?
Correct.
So that potentially raises a concern of an open meeting law violation?
Correct.
Would, am I correct in believing that if the meeting wasn't posted properly and was in violation of the open meeting law, they would have to take another vote on this as a vote would be void?
Through the chair, whenever, if something like that were to happen in one of the town boards of commissions, that would be the advice of Town Council, would be that any discussion and vote that took place at a meeting that wasn't duly posted technically would be invalid because the meeting was supposed to be posted. So if it was a board of commission that was under the control of the town or the Board of Selectmen, the advice from Town Council and myself would be to hold another meeting and have that same discussion again in a public meeting and then take the vote again. I would say the vote would really be null and void if it wasn't properly posted. I don't know for sure, I don't know what this discussion was at the Housing Authority that day. I do know from the appointee that the Board made to fill that vacancy until the election next May, that appointee had reached out to me to say she had spoken with the chair and that the chair had explained that the Auburn Housing Authority had voted not to allow remote participation. So other than that correspondence from your appointee to the Board right now, I don't have any other proof that that vote took place because, again, there was no agenda. I did look at the agenda that initially was submitted that wasn't posted because it wasn't signed, and I didn't see anything specific to a vote on remote participation. The only item I saw, and again, the meeting technically wasn't posted, so the vote would be void, but the only thing I saw that maybe would relate to it was a discussion and vote to change the Board meeting format. I'm not sure if that's where the Housing Authority planned on having that discussion. Again, there was nothing on the agenda that specifically talked about remote meeting participation.
So I'll now open it up to Board comment and questions. So we have two issues before us, whether the Board wishes to take any actions and any letter. I know that I certainly am disappointed in the position, especially with the governor's position on remote participation. But we have two issues here, a potential open meeting law violation, if in fact we learn further that it was and request them to address that open meeting law violation, and the action that they took or intend on taking to not allow our appointee participate by not allowing remote participation. Do members, do any members want to speak to this?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Berthium, yes.
Through you to the town manager. It is actually a concern, the fact that, you know, the governor has requested us to, you know, to have the separation and the remote meetings and everything else, that we would have an organization that, you know, didn't want to allow that. And it was also my understanding that, you know, and it might, part of it might be that, you know, some people aren't comfortable with remote, you know, with computers and everything. But to the town manager, isn't it my understanding that you've offered all aspects of the town assistance and helping to get whoever needed to be remote, you'd help them to be able to do that with the remote meetings?
Through the chair to Mr. Berthium, that's correct. I did reach out to the chair when this was first brought to my attention, and I contacted him by telephone and explained and offered our town assistance. Ed and I talked about it, and we felt, you know, as you said, a lot of people are just not comfortable with remote, maybe they've never done it before. The first time, it's not easy, we all know that, even the second time, it's not easy. So I had offered the assistance of myself and our IT department to help walk them through the process. How was it done? I recommended a remote model. I said not, your entire Board wouldn't have to be remote, although that's what's recommended. The governor and the Department of Public Health are recommending that everybody participate remotely. But if someone truly felt that they had to be in person, maybe they don't have a computer, they have no access to it. I recommended they could look at a hybrid model where at least they made remote participation available to, number one, this member who has a situation where she cannot be exposed to anybody, so can't be in person. And number two, for anyone at the Housing Authority who lives there or members of the public who want to come in and speak to that Board, who may have health compromised immune systems and they're concerned for their own safety in going into a meeting that's taking place in person. So I did offer to help set it up. We do have a script that the chair just read that we can share. We have, I can share the posting that shows how to post it, and the chair said, you know, all sounds great, thank you for offering, I'll go back and talk to the rest of the members of the Board. So apparently, after that conversation that I had with the chair, the Board voted not to hold remote participation at all, which, again, I agree with what you're all saying up. I am concerned because, first of all, I don't know the size of their room, but there is also a gatherings order that says that no more than eight persons per 1,000 square feet can be in one location. So to give you an example, the select boardroom that you're all very familiar with, that can only hold 11 people. Our planning boardroom can only hold four. So I don't know how big their room is, maybe they've already measured it and calculated out what the square footage is, my understanding is, and maybe they have something that says something different, but I don't believe that they're exempt from that gatherings requirement. There are very few exemptions. Town meetings are exempt, but I don't believe a body of a public entity is exempt from that. So I would be concerned that if a member of the public really did want to go into that room, that they'd be, again, violating the gatherings order by allowing a member of the public to go into that room if they were already at their capacity based on that eight per 1,000, with a maximum of 25. So if there was a hot issue, and maybe hopefully there never are, but they're limiting access to the public, which, again, is another concern, and that's why the governor's promoting remote participation, because the public should be able to participate. You shouldn't have to say only a certain amount of people can come into the room.
I'm very, you know, very concerned with the fact that, you know, seeing how we've run the meetings and we get our agenda packet and it's, you know, able to follow it. I have basically the Zoom setup on the left side of my screen and the packet on the right, very easy to follow a meeting, very easy to turn volume on and off, to turn cameras on and off. It really has become a way of life now, and, you know, I'm not even sure going forward, once the governor is, you know, has kind of lifted the request to do remote session that, you know, some people may still want, I think it's a wonderful thing because, you know, even if in the future, you know, I get stuck somewhere, you know, on traveling for business or whatever, and I still want to participate in the meeting, I'm able to do that. I think it was something that I brought up when I first got on the Board four years ago, and back then, we kind of looked at it and said, yeah, you know, there's so many questions as to, you know, how it can be handled and things like that, but it's really worked out well. You know, it's probably, I don't know if it's a way that Sharon can go back and even look to the minutes and things like that, but it really is a great way now to have a meeting, and it's very, very disappointing to me that, you know, that a Board, especially after we just, you know, selected a Board member, that she can't participate. Maybe it's a blessing that the way that they handled the last meeting and the vote isn't, you know, the legal and binding way to do it. You know, it might be a blessing that they can kind of relook at the, you know, the remote meetings, and also, I would recommend that we send a letter as a Board to them, you know, expressing disappointment with their initial vote, expressing that, you know, the town manager is, you know, able to help anybody with being able to do remote meetings, and that this is really probably going to become, you know, a way of the future, and they really need to reconsider what their thoughts are on that, even for themselves if they're not feeling well or going to be out, that they can participate in the meeting. So I don't know if I need to make that in a form of a motion or how you want to do it, but I definitely think a letter should go out to them expressing at least my disappointment. I don't know how the other Board members feel.
I would completely agree with that, Lionel. To have one of the new members on that Board request a reasonable accommodation, to not give proper notice of it, and then to really discourage from the facts that are being given to me here, it seems like they're discouraging public participation. I hope I'm wrong, but that seems like it's not in good faith, that that vote was not made in good faith, and I think that should be said on the record. So I very much, they've had notice of our meeting as well. I wish that somebody from the Housing Authority would have been here tonight to really at least justify their concern, or at least justify their vote. So I would support a letter. I'd like to certainly view that letter before going out as well.
Do any other members want to speak before I repeat what I believe I heard was Mr. Berthium's motion? Mr. LaLiberty, do you want to speak? We can't hear you. We can't hear you, Tristan. Do you want to, do you want to call in? I'm going to, I'm going to give Mr. LaLiberty a minute to either sign off and sign back on. He's going to call in. So I will not repeat the motion until Mr. LaLiberty is on. Mr. Capinta, do I see you unmuted?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Did you want to speak to this?
Yes, I...
Let me just interrupt you for a minute. Do you want to wait a minute until Mr. LaLiberty can hear your comments?
Sure, that's...
Okay, so we are going to pause.
Madam Chair.
Are you telling me you can hear us, Mr. LaLiberty? Okay, Mr. Capinta, go ahead and make your comments as Mr. LaLiberty can hear your comments.
Okay. I am very concerned. I think we should be, as a community, and the Housing Authority is part of our community, you know, being open, and as it's already been said, the town is offered its considerable assistance to them in case of a lack of ability or qualified staff of their own to do that. So I would hope that they would reconsider their decision not to have remote participation. I just do want to be cautious. They are an independent elected Board. I don't, they do not fall under the town charter, and they do not answer to this Board. So any letter or communication, especially where we're not quite sure of the facts, it seems like we're not 100% clear as to whether there was an open meeting violation, which we wouldn't be responsible for enforcing either, either way, that we just be very cautious and respectful of the Board, you know, that we be respectful of the Board and, you know, attempt to persuade them to reconsider their, their position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capinta, and I would agree with you that, you know, our letter needs to indicate that our disappointment in their vote limiting the participation of the person that we appointed to their Board. Miss LaLiberty, can you, do you have something to say? I see you're on your phone now.
Yeah, hopefully, can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah, I can hear all of you. I don't know for whatever reason, I guess my mic doesn't work on my computer. I would just say that I agreed with everything Mr. Berthium and Mr. Ren said. I'm really disappointed and a little frustrated with the decision of the Body not to allow one of our members who was just appointed access to meetings. I think it really damages their effectiveness as a Board not being at full participation, and I don't think it's really fair or respectful to that member, forcing them to choose between their own personal health and serving on the Board. So I would support a letter, just voicing our concerns over their decision, and hopefully when they actually do take the vote, that they, or take the vote properly, that they'll reconsider their decision.
Thank you. Is there any other Board comment?
Madam Chair, I would just respectfully ask that we don't use the word disappointment and just ask them to reconsider, or I don't think we want to put a value or a judgment, a potential judgment on it. We could just simply ask them to reconsider and for all the reasons that have already been stated.
Thank you. So I'll turn to Mr. Berthium because I wrote down what I believed was the intent of your motion that I planned on reading back, and you, in your, in your language use, the word expressed the Board's disappointment in your position of not allowing remote participation.
I, I'd like to, you know, it is disappointment. It's disappointment in the fact that we have all of this technology available to us, and, you know, we have a new member, we have somebody in the town, and I think it's an awesome thing that we had, you know, so many people running for Selectmen this year, we had people that are interested in the Boards now, and we're starting to get, you know, community involvement, and then to turn around and basically kind of, when we have the technology to not offer that technology, that's disappointing to me, and I would like to leave my motion the way it is.
Thank you. So I'm going to read the motion as I heard it, and if it's incorrect, please correct it before I ask for a second. Mr. Berthium moves to authorize the town manager to draft a letter from the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Commissioners at the Housing Authority, expressing their disappointment in their position on not allowing remote participation, particularly in, I'm sorry, I've got to get this right, particularly in a member that the Board of Selectmen just appointed. Is that correct, Mr. Berthium?
Yes, and just say that we would, and we would...
Ask them to reconsider their... And the final piece would be to ask for reconsideration of their position.
That's correct, please.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second by Mr. LaLiberty. Is there further discussion? I just, I just want to point out, I was making some notes while, while people were speaking, and, you know, Mr. Berthium talked about Ms. Jacobson's offer to help everyone with any issues with remote participation. And I'll just point out to the Board members that the vice chairman, as well as the person who they identified as their preferred candidate, were both able to participate in a remote meeting when we were holding interviews and ultimately appointing a member. So I have great confidence that the Board of Commissioners can do this. Is there any other comments? Okay, I'm going to call the vote. Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Capinta?
I'm going to abstain due to concerns over the wording of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair, the chair votes yes. So we have four affirmative and one abstention on that. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. The next item we have is a Drain Layers License application for Stormy Construction Incorporated of Millbury, Mass. Enclosed are the application documents and recommendation of the Board of Sewer Commissioners, and just for Mr. Ren's first vote in a Drain Layers License. Generally, we have the applicant come in, but this is something that we've allowed the Board of Sewer Commissioners to handle the references and background. So we just base our recommendation on what those Board of Sewer Commissioners, as long as they've done previous work and they have, they have good, clean recommendations, we don't require them to come in. All other applicants for licenses need to come in at least the first time before the Board of Selectmen. So if, are there any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, is there a motion regarding the application for a Drain Layers License for Stormy Construction, Inc. of Millbury?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I'll make a motion to...
Bye, Tristan.
I'll make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled, said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it, and failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Berthium has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, with a roll call vote, Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Capinta?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yeah.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Moving right over, the next agenda item is reconstitution of the Open Space Committee. The Open Space Committee is being reconstituted as explained in the town manager's letter in your packet dated September 10. The Board would need to vote to consider designated a Board Member Representative to the Open Space Committee. Mrs. Jacobson, I could either read the letter or just have you give us a brief summary.
Through the chair, thank you. I can just briefly summarize it for everyone. As you know, we put together an Open Space Committee several years ago to develop an open space plan and submit it to the state for approval. You need state approval to be eligible to apply for grants, mostly under DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation, although occasionally there are other grants that are available, but you need to have that approved plan. So we did appoint a committee, committee did a great job. We developed the plan in 2014, and we updated it in 16. So technically, because it was updated again two years later, it now, it's a five-year plan, it will expire in five years under the state's approval. So it will need to be resubmitted to the state next year by June of 2021. So we'd like to put together an Open Space Committee to review the current plan, update it, and work with our town planner, Adam Menard, who I just want to give the opportunity, Adam is on this call. So Adam, if you have anything to add about this?
Hi, this is Adam. Actually, you kind of captured the intent of it. The state is very specific about what the plan requires, information, what it entails, how to write the plan. So we'll convert, somebody from the Board of Selectmen would like to participate in the Board, that would be terrific. There's somebody from the planning board that volunteered at last week's meeting and offering to say another spot to the Conservation Commission. There's somebody from their Board of Commissioners that's interested, as well as a couple kind of at-large residents. So it's probably going to be about eight months, eight-month effort, there'll be a lot of public outreach. The big crux of the committee will be to kind of develop the goals and action plan for the next seven years, to really looking for the residents to kind of give their input and see what they'd like the town to do with preserving open space, preserving conservation land, and developing, improving the recreation opportunities of health.
Thank you, Adam. And before any members, before I open up to members who may be interested in serving on this, do you recall what type of time commitment this was? Were they meeting like the Board of Selectmen, like twice a month, or were they meeting monthly, every week? Were they meeting later in the day or in the evening? Do you recall that?
Through the chair, I'll tap in because I'm not sure that the town... Through the chair, I'll tap in because I'm not sure that the town planner, Adam, was here at that time. I can tell you that it really is up to the committee as to what kind of time they want to put into it. In many of our advisory committees, meet once a month. Sometimes when you have to have public hearings and additional public meetings, it adds a little bit to that. But Adam, I don't know if you've thought about this in a different manner. Generally, we check with the members and ask what works for them as far as meeting. The good thing is, right now, as I believe Lionel pointed out too, with remote meeting, if indeed beyond COVID, which we all hope will end, but if we go beyond COVID and the board wants to consider allowing, taking a vote to allow you to remote participate after COVID, a lot of it could be done remotely and it may be easier for people to participate in the open space plan meetings. Did you have a set schedule in mind at this point? Are you going to wait for the members to kind of hash it out as to what works for them all?
I'm kind of envisioning once a month as the particular day or time. That's up to the members. Be open to whatever they like to do. I don't foresee needing to meet more than once a month. But if it comes to that, as we're close to any deadlines, that's always a possibility.
So I'll open it up to board members. If there are any board members who are interested in serving on this committee?
I'd like to do this committee if nobody else cares.
Mr. Ren has shown an interest in serving on that committee. Is there anyone else? Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Ren to the Open Space Committee as the board's representative?
I'll move.
Mr. Berthium has a motion?
I'll second.
Ms. La Liberty has seconded it. So we have a motion to appoint Mr. Ren as the board's representative on the Open Space Committee. And it's been seconded by Mr. La Liberty. Mr. Ren, roll call vote?
Aye.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yeah.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
The planning board aspect, so I like that.
Well, you have to also bring back reports to the full board. So make sure you take notes. There is no gift acceptance. There are no proclamation or recognition requests. We have some heavy-duty items with the town manager. So this may take a bit of discussion. As Mrs. Jacobson said, we received a letter from town council talking about the remote participation and the reduced quorum for town meeting, which are Agenda Items 5A and 5B. Do any members need a couple of minutes to look at that letter? I know it came in right before the meeting. We can take a brief recess if any members need that. Seeing none, Mrs. Jacobson, discussion on ability to hold remote participation at town meeting per Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020.
Thank you. Through the chair, as you know, we included in your packet a copy of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020. And this was really a municipal relief package that the legislature passed to give some relief to municipalities across the Commonwealth in dealing with certain deadlines and certain challenges with getting the work done of local government. So what we're referring to tonight are two sections that relate to town meeting. And we were tracking the legislation. There were a number of different proposals that were out there. And this is the one that ended up being passed. And fortunately for us, this one was passed in its current form because it applies to both representative and open town meeting. So some of the other legislation only applied to one or the other. So these two sections do apply to representative town meeting, which is what Auburn has. So the first section, you know, to follow up on a conversation we were just having about remote participation. The reason I asked town council, Bob Henning, to provide an outline for you, I wanted you to see and us to see the many, many steps that are required to have remote participation at a town meeting. It's a lot more challenging than it is to have remote participation in a meeting such as Board of Selectmen or Housing Authority or any of our other boards and commissions. We have 120 elected town meeting members. Plus, we have all of the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, and the employees, both on the school department side and the town side. So when you think about it, we're talking about 150 people minimum that need to participate. And then we have all the department heads that need to be there and be able to participate. And it also is open to the public for participation. So we're talking about a massive undertaking. And I think what's important to note is the town council has pointed out to me, you can go through all of these steps and you can see there are posting steps, which is why we asked to put it on your agenda tonight, just as a discussion, not as a vote. Because you have to post your intent to potentially vote it. There are a lot of steps to be had. But the step that concerned us the most in this law is that you have to convene your town meeting. So let's say you voted to do it remotely. You'd have to convene the town meeting. If the town meeting members all voted not to have it remotely, if the vote was a majority not to do that, you couldn't continue the meeting remotely. So there's just that chance that even if you go through all of this, there could be a majority of town meeting members who say, I don't want to do this remotely. So while I believe remote is the way to go with 99.9% of our meetings, whether they're public meetings or internal meetings. Ed and I have talked to town council about this. We've also talked to the town clerk and we've talked to the moderator. And as you can see, a request to go remote also needs to come from the moderator. Because technically, town meeting is the moderator's meeting. And I can just tell you a couple of the concerns in addition to what I just mentioned. Number one, the blocking of people on a call. We just don't, we are very concerned that with 150-plus people on a call, we don't want anyone to be missed who potentially wants to speak. It's very difficult to take the votes. And we're going to have to go through this again. I'm not sure if a roll call vote is needed. It's needed in your meetings, but you have five people. How do you do a roll call vote with 120 people? So that's a concern. Our other concern is the technology. 120 members. We looked at our demographics and there are quite a few of those members that are older, not necessarily in the workforce, and maybe necessarily might not have access to a computer that can handle this type of participation. So the moderator had also expressed a concern that is everybody going to be adept enough to be able to participate? Because we have to have a quorum, which will be the next thing we get to. But assuming nothing changes, you'd still need to participate. So you have to-- Sorry, I think that was yours, Mr. La Liberty. I think it just had a little static on our end. We're reading looks though. I saw you said, "Sorry." Okay. So I think in speaking to the moderator, the town clerk, Eddie and myself, our thought was if we can find another way to hold town meeting that is physically safe for people and still gives access to everybody and access to the public, like we did it outside in June, that was an alternative to the remote. Because we just don't know that we can get everybody to have the right technology to participate with that kind of volume. So obviously, the town meeting now is scheduled for October 27. We all know we've had two Halloween blizzards. So don't want to jinx it, but clearly, we could have a snowstorm on October 27. You could have beautiful weather on October 27, but you're risking having it outside. And Ed has pointed out, at 7:00 PM, it's dark. So you've got a lighting issue. You've got a temperature issue. So in lieu of outside, we're looking at some type of hybrid situation, similar to what we did with the outside, where maybe we could divide the town meeting members within either the high school or the middle school and maybe use multiple rooms to hold this. And therefore, it's not technically remote with all of this work involved. But people within the same building can still participate, have their voices heard, watch it. And those who have health compromised situations that are uncomfortable, we're working on, again, seeing if we could set them up in their cars, like we did at the June meeting, and streaming this through 16:10 AM. So they could hear the whole thing and give them paddles and put a monitor outside. So when the vote came, those people could vote. Because there are going to be people, regardless of how many rooms we use, they're going to be concerned about going inside. So we're working with the school department and the school superintendent to see if there's another model that we can use that's unique. We talked about a drive-in model, you know, can we set it up like a drive-in movie with our big screen, have everybody drive in and participate? It's still an option, but the concern on that still is the temperature. If it's cold, people are going to want to keep turning their cars on. So we're not quite sure that's the best model. We're going to have to make a decision in the next week or so. But we didn't want to make that decision without bringing this option to you. As a Board of Selectmen, you have the option to consider remote participation. And if you did vote that way, we obviously will do whatever it takes to get that done. Pardon me. So our recommendation right now is that we arrange some type of physical onsite location at either the high school or the middle school that would accommodate up to 120. And again, if the next item passes and we can reduce the quorum, you still have to accommodate for 120 members. Because what if 120 showed up? So we still want to make whatever arrangements we have to make to make everybody feel safe and comfortable participating in this town meeting. Ed, do you want to add anything to that on the remote?
So, thank you, Julie. You know, we've given this a lot of thought and we have to come to some type of decision. But we had some interesting talks with Chris Hugo, Joe Fahey, and the IT personnel at the school department. Trying to get a little creative, trying to social distance people in a way that is greater than the six-foot model to give some people a comfort level. But just to give you an idea of what we're thinking, if somehow we're able to tie in the auditorium and put the town meeting members on the upper deck as well and put those department heads who typically sit back there in another room that we could tie in. So we would utilize the auditorium, the entire auditorium for town meeting members, as well as another area, such as the auditorium or maybe the cafeteria area down below. And then somehow tie in the front lot or the back lot where there could be a component of drive-in town meeting members that, like Julie said, no matter what you do, they're not going to feel comfortable participating in a closed area or in a building. We believe with the technology, we can do that. But once again, it's all going to depend on what the quorum is going to be, how many people are going to participate. Quite honestly, the town meeting we had on the football field is the most attended meeting we had in a long time. So I think people are willing to give whatever a shot. Hopefully, somehow we can make it work without going totally remote. And that in itself brings in a lot of complexities to how you orchestrate that and how you take votes and things of that nature.
Thank you both for the information. Do board members?
Sorry, one more thing through the chair. Just a reminder, I mentioned it earlier, but not in the context of this item. Town meetings are exempt from the restrictions on gatherings. So legislative bodies, which in Auburn is your town meeting, is exempt. So we still, as Eddie pointed out, they still, we could still have that many people in one area. We just feel from a safety perspective, it's just not a good idea. It's just, I know we're exempt on certain things, but we still have to take every precaution. And we also have to make sure that the public, even though they don't participate in town meeting, we want them to feel comfortable attending or watching it. I wish they do at home. As you know, we rarely get more than 10 or so people in there. But we want to be able to have an area for people to come if they do want to do that. And to add one more thing to what Eddie said, we would also give consideration to putting the school committee in one room, the Board of Selectmen in one room, and maybe the Finance Committee in one room. Because they're not voting either, but they want to watch. So that would get a lot of people out of that one area and spread them out even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Carpenter, please.
I was just saying, with all the reading that I did and thank the town manager for all the good information, as well as town council for even providing additional information, there's really something that the moderator and the town clerk need to agree to personally. I feel that the Board of Selectmen should refrain until we get something from the moderator, who seems to be in the driver's seat on that particular act. And I wouldn't think that we should consider anything until we hear from the moderator.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Mr. Berthium, yes?
Yeah, so a couple of things that come to mind in listening is, through you to the town manager, how many total town meeting members do we have?
120.
120, and our quorum is 80 currently.
80, right now, correct.
So has anybody reached out to or sent a letter to the 120 to actually see who might not be willing to come in and, you know, represent in a public setting? My concern with the, and you folks brought it up, my concern with the cars is that it is dark that time of year. And, you know, unless it's an earlier meeting where you could have it, you know, right at 5:00, you might be able to sneak an hour or so in. But, you know, it concerns me that it would be dark and people going out looking for, you know, signs being held out of cars, you know, might not be the best way to do it. The other thing would be if, you know, people, I don't know if there's any phone applications where, you know, town meeting members can vote, you know, by dialing in one for yes and two for no, the number two. But, you know, to look into that. I know we're on very short term right now for, obviously, our October 27 meeting. But I think that if we could get a letter out to the 120 town meeting members fairly quickly, that might be good information for the clerk and the town moderator to be able to look and say, okay, we really only have, you know, five exceptions of people that don't want to get together. And other than that, I love the idea of having, you know, separate rooms for the different committees that don't get involved in the vote, but want to watch it. And also, you know, having the different areas where, you know, maybe the public can go and they can be, you know, remoted in or videoed in through, you know, maybe the gym or cafeteria and the town meeting members being in the auditorium. So I definitely think you guys have done a lot of great research and have a good plan going. I just wanted to throw a couple of extra ideas out there. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. And so I just want to be clear on this and I agree with Mr. Carpenter. If you look at our proposed timeline for remote participation of town meeting, between September 19 and September 27, a written request must be submitted by the moderator for a remote participation town meeting. And after that, the Board of Selectmen shall vote to determine if the town meeting shall be held remotely by means of a video or telephone conferencing platform requested by the moderator. And that vote must be taken no later than 10 business days after submission by the moderator to the Board of Selectmen. So I would, I will still keep it open for comments. But I, you know, I would agree that the next step has to be the town manager needs to be in contact with the moderator because, and of course, bring the town clerk into the discussion. But this appears to be solely a written request by the moderator.
Through the chair, you're correct. So the law provides that the moderator must make a request. And as you can see, I think it's on the third page. And as you can see, I think it's on the third page. It said the moderator has to determine two things. One, that they cannot safely assemble town meeting members and interested members of the public. And two, that in a common location while complying with all guidance. Part of the concern is, we can safely do it. It's just some members may not be comfortable there. So that's one statement. It may be hard for him to make that statement given that we're allowed to have our town meeting in any building in town. And even under a new law, you're allowed to move it out of town if you have to. But to Mr. Berthium's question, we did not reach out to town meeting members yet on this because we didn't, we didn't know what we were going to be proposing. When we reached out to them all by telephone before the June meeting and said, this is what we're doing. We're going to have it on the field. And instead of, would you come if it was on the field? And if you were concerned about the field, would you come if you could stay in your car? And from that, we got 13 people, 13 members who said that they would stay in their car. And we got 100-plus that said that they would participate on the field. We only had a couple who said they couldn't do either because they couldn't be, they just couldn't take the chance of being out and exposed at all. And I think we had about eight of those, somewhere on those numbers. So I'm going to say it's going to be similar in this situation. If we decide to do this not remotely and to do it spreading them out, we would call the town meeting members and find out how many would need to be in their cars and how many would need to be separated. And we do that by phone. We have to get about six employees to call. Because as the chair just pointed out, the timeline's too strict to enable us to do a written letter and then get information back because of all these timelines. But we did have an initial conversation with the moderator, who was not, didn't believe the remote would work for a lot of different reasons. But we can get something more firm because you are all correct. The moderator, the moderator is the one that drives the process. And if he wants to make the request, the board then has to act on it. It's my understanding, and we'll verify it, that this isn't a request that he felt it was appropriate to make because of some of the complications. But we can check with him tomorrow. That's why we wanted it on your agenda today. So if he did want to do it, we have two weeks to get you prepared. Do the posting, contact the town meeting members, and get a plan in place. Because at that point, if he did want to do the remote and the board wanted to, we'd have to find out how many town meeting members could actually participate remotely. Do people have the technology? Are they able to do it? Are they comfortable doing it, taking a vote? And is the moderator comfortable running the meeting and having to watch the screen with 150 participants?
So Mrs. Jacobson, you'll speak to the moderator in the next couple of days and get a definitive answer on how he wants to proceed?
Correct.
Thank you. Do members have any other comments or questions? We're going to be moving on to the quorum issue, but do you have any questions or comments on the remote participation?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Berthium.
Just a question. If the moderator were to try to do the remote and you had that 150 people on the screen, are assistants used, allowed, not allowed to be able to feed back to him so that, you know, you had, you know, maybe two or three assistants that might be focusing on 20 people each? Or do you know if that's allowable? Or is he really the only one that can, would have to maintain the screen and look at all 120-plus people?
Through the chair, it's my understanding that someone could help the moderator. I'm sure we could figure that out. And I just want to make sure I'm clear. I apologize. It still affects us. But open town meeting has a different process to follow for remote than representative town meeting. So this, we are just talking about Auburns right now. But the other issue is that we have to keep in mind, even if we went forward with this, when they convene the meeting, they have to take a vote to then continue to go forward remotely. So you'd really have to know what the position was of your town meeting members before you did that. Because then you'd have to have, you're still having to face having a physical town meeting somewhere. And that would have to be put off till another night that you have already posted. So we'd have to have double postings. You'll have to post for a remote town meeting and then you'd have to make arrangements in case that vote failed for non-remote. So, yeah, I don't know. As far as telephone, through the chair to Mr. Berthium, telephone is the same thing as remote. So calling in a vote is the same thing as a remote. It's a form of remote participation, so you can't have that. Some communities, I know of one that has done this, I know of a couple, but one did this and they had electronic voting machines in place for their town meetings. So some of those electronic voting machines, you press a button for yes and you press a button for no. It goes up on a screen during the meeting. Some of those machines, my understanding, have the capacity to then have a remote as well. So they already purchased the machines. So there's some way that you can tie those remote into remote participation. We don't have those machines.
Through the chair, I was just wondering, were those just eye clicker kind of small handheld devices that they just handed out to the town meeting members and had them?
Yes. Through the chair, we looked at a couple of different models from different communities. And they are, they're about this large. And yes, you press yes or you press no. It goes up on a screen exactly how many people voted yes, how many voted no. The moderator was not in favor of utilizing those machines. And it is, town meeting is the moderator's meeting per se. We've had that conversation a couple of times with the moderator. Perhaps with the COVID situation that no one ever could have imagined we'd be in this. To Mr. Berthium's point, and I think Mr. Wren said it too, you know, this is going to change the way we do business moving forward. It's a new normal. And maybe the new normal should include things like electronic voting machines because if you have them in place and you have to use them for remote, then you're one step ahead rather than having to set the whole thing up. There are a couple of companies, the court's office did a lot of research into these machines. And they did find a company that would come in and do one of our town meetings with these machines free of charge, just to see if we liked it. And if we liked it, then we could go ahead and purchase them. But again, you have to have the support of the moderator to want to have this type of machine. And I think he had some concerns about them. I won't speak for him, but I know he had some concerns about the machines.
So I think we can move on from this one because we have to wait until the town manager speaks with the moderator to see how he wants to move forward. I think the checklist for the quorum adjustment certainly is something that we need to address because this falls on the Board of Selectmen. So Mrs. Jacobson, if you could talk about that process. And this is the next, this is Agenda Item 5, the discussion on ability to reduce the quorum for town meeting per Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020. You're muted.
Okay. So you don't need to see me, but can you hear me? Yeah, okay. I apologize. So on this particular section of Checker 92 of the Acts of 2020, the Board of Selectmen, in consultation with the moderator, can change the quorum. And the requirements, it's interesting, there aren't that many parameters for doing it under this law. The only parameter really is that the quorum cannot be less than 10% of your current quorum. So if our current quorum, or 10% of those are needed to meet. So I know what I saw what town council wrote, but it was my understanding is it would be 10% of the 80. It couldn't be less than 10% of the 80. I think his letter said it couldn't be less than 10% of the 120. But either way, it couldn't be less than, you couldn't go less than that under the law. I think the issue is, we struggle every annual town meeting and every fall town meeting to get a quorum. You know, we send out code red calls the week before, the night of. Then we get to town meeting, we still don't have a quorum, so we start with the phone calls. We start begging people to come. And sometimes we waited 45 minutes or longer to get a quorum so we could start town meeting. So in a non-COVID world, getting 80 people to come to town meeting has been a challenge. In a COVID world, we understand it's going to be even more of a challenge. Just if you look at the demographics of our town meeting, we are going to have members that are vulnerable populations and we could potentially not get that quorum of 80. So myself, the assistant town manager, the town clerk, we all talked about what we felt would be an important recommendation to this board because we do believe, A, we should reduce the quorum. This does not mean if you get 120 members, that 120 members can't participate. Whoever comes as a member can participate. All it means is you could start the meeting and continue it if you don't, if you reach a quorum, not necessarily a quorum of 80. So we talked a lot about what would be realistic. Again, you could go all the way down to eight or 12. We don't think that's appropriate. This is a public meeting. It's a public process. People have run for these seats. But if there are a lot of people who feel they can't come, what's a reasonable quorum? And we thought, the three of us thought 40. The town court thought 50% of the current quorum down to 40 would be good. She and I then both spoke to the moderator the other day and he supports the recommendation of a quorum of 40. He felt that that was realistic. Again, it's, all it means is we can't have the meeting if we don't have 40. But if we have 60, 80, 100, 120, obviously, all those people can participate. No one would be prevented from participating. So the recommendation from myself, the assistant town manager, the town clerk, and the moderator was to drop it to 40. And as you can see on the last page of the checklist that Attorney Hennigan gave, this requires far less notifications and actions. We're talking about it today. Your next meeting is September 28th. If you wanted to do this, you would have to publish a notice of intent to vote, which actually, as you can see from his letter, is really just posting an agenda early. Instead of 48 hours, you'd have to post it not less than seven days before the 28th. So by the 21st, on or before the 21st, we would have to post a public notice that you were going to be considering reducing the quorum. Then if you took that vote on September 28th, 10 days after that, the, not less than 10 days after that, the town clerk has to notify the attorney general of your vote. Those are the only steps. So the posting of it, the actual vote, and then the town court tells the attorney general. And again, on this, per Chapter 92, it is supposed to be a recommendation and the moderator working with the board to determine the quorum. So I am passing the message along to the moderator. Based on my call with him, he said to let you know that he would support a recommendation of 40. Again, there would be public postings and you have plenty of time to discuss it.
So I'll open it up for board comment. But my first comment on this, and I agree that we should reduce the quorum, I just feel for the record, because this is all new territory, I would like to see something in writing from the moderator that he supports the reduction to 40, just for the record. I burst your conversation, but I feel it's important because this is all new territory. We have, we have letters from town council. We have documents from you. I'd like to just hear from the moderator or have something in writing. I'll open it up to board comment or questions. Mr. Berthium, did you have your?
Yeah, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I actually like the fact that we could, if we could reduce it to 40. I think it's kind of ridiculous to sit. I watch most of the town meetings remotely on my TV. And, you know, to sit there for 40 minutes waiting to get a quorum is, I think, also disturbing and disappointing. You know, if there's 120 people that ran to get elected to do town meeting, it really shouldn't be that hard to get, you know, 80 people there. But in the case of COVID and even in the future, I like the fact of 40 because it still gives a good mix of people that are, you know, interested in being there and responsible to be there on time. And it allows the meeting to get started. And but it also, if 120, like the town manager said, if 120 people can show up, that's awesome. We have that many to vote. But I don't think our meetings should be held up any longer. And it seems to be the norm that our meetings are held up because of the whole quorum thing. So I actually love the idea of reducing it to 40 and getting the meeting started. And hopefully, you know, we get much more participation than that 40. But at least if the meeting is at 7, it starts at 7. So I'm 100% in agreement with going down to 40. Thank you.
Mrs. Jacobson, I just should, I want to add something that I should have said in the beginning and it does say it in Attorney Hennigan's letter. Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020 only apply to town meetings that are held during the COVID-19 state of emergency, as declared by the governor. So this is not a permanent reduction of the quorum. Even though moving forward, I agree, sometimes it's hard. It's going to continue to be hard to get that 80. If you take this vote on the 28th, it would only apply to any town meeting that was held during the COVID-19 state of emergency in Massachusetts by the governor. So if the governor were to remove that prior to next May, then your quorum will go back up to 80 next May. So this is a temporary, not a permanent situation.
Thank you. Do any other members have any questions or comments?
Yes, this is Scott Wren. I'd just like to comment that this is my full support as well. Obviously, we want as much participation as possible, but during these trying times, it's even more important now than ever that the business of the town goes forward. So we need to make it as easy as possible for that to happen. So this has my full support.
Okay. So I believe, I'm not sure if we need a motion, but I would prefer to have a motion that the board votes in support of publishing a notice of its intention to consider an adjustment of the town meeting quorum requirements as per the governor's order. Does anyone want to make that motion?
Remove it, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wren has made the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Berthium has made a second. Sharon, did you get that motion okay? I'm sure she's there. All right, so we have a, you repeat that one more time? The motion is that the Board of Selectmen shall publish a notice of its intent to consider an adjustment of town meeting quorum requirements under the governor's guidelines for COVID-19.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we need a roll call vote on this. Mr. Wren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yeah.
And the chair votes yes. It's a unanimous vote. Is there anything else on this item, Mrs. Jacobson? So we will see this on our September 28th agenda.
Through the chair, and you'll also have a letter from the moderator. I'll make sure he puts it in writing because that is a requirement that he also has to approve of this, not just the board. So I'll get that letter. We can help him transcribe that letter depending on what's required under the law. So we'll get that to you well in advance of your meeting as well.
Great, thank you. So moving on, we have an ADA transition plan draft and update?
Yes. So I won't go through the whole thing, but there is a letter in the packet. It was a notification. I did send it to the board a couple of weeks ago and just wanted the public to be aware of it. As you all know, we received a grant from the Massachusetts Office on Disability to put together an ADA transition plan, which the town has never had. It's highly recommended that we have a plan such as that because it's a blueprint for moving forward to make improvements to your public facilities, whether they're buildings or parks or land, to make it better accessible for the entire community. And it allows, the plan allows us to come up with recommendations and strategies and priorities. So we, you actually, this board made the development of this plan one of my goals for this year. So we did get the grant. We hired a consultant. We had to put off the timeframe by about a month and a half, maybe. We had to put off the timeframe by about a month and a half, maybe two months because of COVID, because the consultants couldn't actually go into some of the buildings or into some of the land. Not only were they not allowed to on the town side, but in their own companies, they weren't allowed to go on site until certain conditions were met. So we, we are back on track. We applied for and received an extension from the state, and this is a pretty comprehensive plan. It's available on our website at auburnguide.com, and there is a link, once you go in there, it's right on the front page, tells you how to get there. There's a link to all of the documents that have been developed, and that includes an executive summary, an evaluation of our policies, which actually, we, we had to develop some policies, a self-evaluation, which is the actual site evaluation, the overview of all the municipal buildings, school buildings, outdoor facilities, and then a summary report. And then lastly, a number of itself spreadsheets that outlines the improvements to be made to every single municipal or school facility to bring us into total compliance and even beyond that, just to, to make it more ADA friendly in addition to the actual legal requirements. We understand, and I just want the Board to know and the public to know, we know this is a multimillion dollar process to do this. It is for any community in Massachusetts, and I'll say that because we're all older communities. A lot of our infrastructure was developed prior to the ADA requirements, federal ADA requirements. So updating it is a big undertaking, but you need to have the plan in place to at least get started. And the state recognizes this isn't going to happen overnight. They also recognize that COVID is going to impact all of us financially. It's going to have an impact on our CIP and our process for making improvements. So as best we can, each year, we are going to be focused on these priorities. So we're asking the public to take a look, and if you have any comments, get them to us either by email, mail, or in person, you can call us, and we will have the consultant take a look and see, you know, based on these comments, are we still within the requirements of the ADA, which is the Americans with Disabilities Act. So we will then submit the report to the state, and our intent is to get it to the state next week because once it's into the state, we're then eligible for the next item on your agenda, which is to apply for a project grant for the ADA Municipal Grant Program, which enables us to apply for up to $250,000 to implement some of the strategies that we've developed in the plan. So it's a logical process to follow. So it's the development of the plan, identify the strategies, identify your priorities, and then start applying for money to make those priorities become a reality. So that's what our plan is. This has been a really interesting process for all of us. I would say our ADA coordinator is Caleb Moody, who's our Building Commissioner, and he does a fantastic job, but this project has involved every single municipal and school department because every single building had to be evaluated. The consultants had to walk through all, they had to meet with all of the staff to learn about what programs we offer, how do we offer them, how do we make them accessible, what, what accommodations do we make, which goes back to a kind of a discussion we had at the first item about the Auburn Housing Authority. It's, even if it's something that's not required by the law, we should all be doing our best to make accommodations for those who have a disability or a need that we can possibly address. So we're asking the public to get the comments to us by next Monday so we can get this off to the state next week and go to the next step, which is apply for grant funding.
Great, thank you for that. Do any members have any comments or questions? Seeing none, we can, great job on that. We can move on to the next item, which is the, hold on, I've got papers everywhere. The vote to authorize the Town Manager to apply for, accept, and expend grant funds under the Fiscal Year 21 cycle of the Municipal ADA Improvement Grant Program. Mrs. Jacobson?
I know. If you have all this free time and you want to read 200 pages of the ADA transition plan and go through all of it, but I can summarize for you now that amongst the priorities that we feel are the most important right now are the playgrounds. So under the ADA, most of our playgrounds need upgrading with regard to the, the treatment under the playgrounds, and it's very expensive to do that. So this ADA grant has not been funded by the state yet. It's not confirmed, but the application period is open until I think it's October 9th or October 10th. So we want to get a grant in, assuming it's going to be funded by the state and made a priority. So our intent is to look at the priority on all those Excel charts. Lemansky was about $130,000 to bring it into comply, not compliance, but to, to meet some of the priorities that would enhance our ADA accessibility. And also, we thought since we could apply for up to 250,000, we'd take a number of other playgrounds and bundle it as a grant application to upgrade the town playgrounds and get as many of them done as we can. So that was the intent. If the Assistant Town Manager has anything to say, I know we checked and there's no match required. So this would be just a straightforward grant application for 250,000, although I would tell you, Ed and I have had our discussions about this, and we really feel, once this plan's in place, it's important for us to try to allocate some funding from the town every year, maybe through one of our funds that we've put CIP dollars into, but we, this plan is here for a reason, and we need to make every effort we can to implement some of these strategies. Some can be done for very short money, you know, talking a couple hundred dollars. I think the larger projects like the playgrounds where you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, we're going to have to carefully wait for certain grant opportunities to do that. So today, we're asking for your support to allow us to apply for the up to $250,000 for ADA improvements to our playgrounds. Ed, is, is there anything on this that you need to add?
Julia, I think you hit on all the key elements that we talked about. I think what we want to focus on going forward, like Julie said, is prioritize this in the CIP, so when we're replacing playgrounds that are programmed in the CIP, we make sure we're ADA compliant under the terms of, of the, the grant with this plan. And then we also have some financial flexibility. Every year, when we have a consideration for the use of our free cash policy, we spend up to 50% of the net gain. So we may be able to tackle a few of these projects through that funding source or maybe through a future vote of overlay surplus funds that we typically use for our facilities management program. So, you know, these are the kind of things we're thinking about now, but I think, you know, by a vote of the Board to apply for these grant funds would go a long way in addressing the first phase and addressing our ADA compliant issues. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed. I, I should, as part of this plan, transition plan, we will be ultimately putting together a disability commission under Massachusetts law as well, made up of residents who are eligible to participate in such a commission to help guide this plan in the future. You know, this is something that shouldn't just go on a shelf, it should be continually reviewed and implemented so that Disability Commission will help us stay on top of doing that. So that will be another step that you'll see coming over the next few months as we start to put together that commission as well.
Thank you. Do Board members have any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion regarding the authorization?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bertheum.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Town Manager to apply for, accept, and expend grant funds under the Fiscal Year 21 cycle of the Municipal ADA Improvement Grant Program.
Do we need a figure on that, up to 250,000?
Yeah.
That's exactly right, yes.
I'm continuing to read. The, the grant funds, if awarded, would pay for ADA improvements to town playgrounds. The award would be up to $250,000.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
So Mr. La Liberty has seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Coppington?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
And the Chairman votes yes, so it's a unanimous vote in support. Thank you.
Thank you all.
And we just have the last item on your agenda, Town Manager agenda, is the dog park update, please.
Correct. So again, talking about grants and the various votes that this Board has taken to allow us to move forward with these, these great projects. So I just wanted to give you an update on where we are because we do get a lot of questions on this. DPW has taken the lead in the dog park. They've done an outstanding job. Bill Coyle and Joanna Paquin and now I wish Corey working on this, and I just got to have to give them a lot of credit. Not only have they been involved in the ADA plan and the transition plan, as all the departments have, but they're, they're heavily involved in it. They've done a very good job on this, and this is a little, it's been a little complicated, but we're getting there. So I just wanted to let the Board know that the town issued, I believe it was in July, we issued a, an RFP for the construction of the dog park, and it went out to bid with the plan design and bid documents that had been prepared for Aspire Consultant, and that was through a grant from the Stanton Foundation to pay for the design. That was 100% paid for by the Stanton Foundation. So we went out to bid and we reviewed all the proposals that came in. I should know the number, I apologize. I think we got about 12 proposals, which was great. And we went with the, happened to be the lowest bidder, which was also the most responsive and responsible bidder. So we are in the process of working with that bidder to come up with a contract. So we couldn't award the contract until we had the grant dollars in place because you can't execute a contract for a project if you don't have the money in place. So we worked with the Stanton Foundation, and they were wonderful. We developed an MOU, a memorandum of agreement, that the Stanton Foundation requires, and we signed that memorandum of agreement, I think about 10 days ago. That enabled the Stanton Foundation to go to the Board, execute the agreement, and then send the funds to us for the construction of the dog park. So we were approved for the dog park construction. And as a result of now having that money in place, we sent a letter of award for the project to the winning bidder last week, and we also sent letters to the bidders that were not selected. All of those went out Friday, so I'm, I'm only hesitating in saying the name because I want to make sure, out of fairness, everyone has a chance to get their letters so they know that they were or were not selected. But we will be working with the company that was selected to develop a contract. So just the details, the Stanton Foundation approved a grant for us for $222,969 for the construction of the dog park. That's in addition to the $20,000 that was for the design. And the Fur Friends of Auburn, as you know, because you voted to accept an increased donation, they are donating $24,774 toward this project, and that's the required match. So the total project cost is 247,743 in addition to the design. And again, for those watching, this Board knows, but no taxpayer dollars are funding this project. This is all funded by the Stanton Foundation and the Fur Friends of Auburn. So we're forever grateful to the Fur Friends, they've done an outstanding job. I believe Mr. La Liberty is a member of the Fur Friends, and he's participated in a lot of their fundraising activities, but we're just thrilled to be moving forward with this. As far as schedules go, it, the contract will have to be reviewed by Town Council. You know, it's a quarter of a million dollars, we want to make sure everything's done right. We anticipate work, once we get the, the contract back, to probably start early fall, and the project should be completed by June 30th. GPW, in the meantime, will start working on the same timeframe to disassemble and unconstruct the current skateboard park, which is where the new dog park is going. And then, as that site gets prepped and ready for the new dog park in the spring, they'll be able to relocate and start working on the new skateboard park. And as part of this, we also had to negotiate with National Grid an ascent agreement because there was an easement that runs through the land where the dog park's going. And we had to make sure that National Grid would give us that easement so that we would be able to construct the park and still provide the easement to them to access what they need to do. So that was reviewed by Town Council over the summer, and that has been executed as well. So everything's ready to go now, and it's just getting this contract in place with the, with the new vendor.
Thank you. Do any Board members have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. La Liberty.
I just wanted to say that I was able to actually attend the reading of the bids, I think it was two weeks ago now, and I talked to Mr. Coyle afterward, and I was actually, I was impressed with the number of bids that we got, and I asked him if that was typical, and he said it actually wasn't, but that was the most bids he'd ever seen on a project. So some good things to come out of COVID is a lot of these construction companies wanted the business, or wanted to make sure that they had business. So the town actually had a lot of really competitive construction companies bidding on this project, so that was great to see. And I just want to congratulate the members of the Fur Friends Executive Board for actually putting together a really aggressive campaign to fundraise, and it's, it's good to see their hard work paying off.
I'll second that. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bertheum.
Yeah, I, I just also wanted to congratulate the Fur Friends for their determination. I know we seemed like we're giving them a hard time at the beginning of this. It, it just goes to show you that if somebody wants to get something done in our community, it can get done, and they did an awesome job by raising that money. And, you know, through all their help and, and with the great work, obviously, of, of our grant writing people here in Auburn, which amazed me, every, you know, meeting that we have, you know, the, where we have on our agenda getting one grant or another, many times with usually as little as 10% match. You know, it, it's phenomenal that our town continues to, you know, get out of town money to, to get a lot of things done, where one of the most progressive towns, I believe, in central Massachusetts, a credit to our Town Manager and all of her staff, and it's a credit, in this case, to the Fur Friends, who, again, were determined and, and did a wonderful job, and I'm, I couldn't be prouder to, to see this project going forward right now. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I move on? Seeing none, we have no tabled items, so we're going to move on to Board of Selectmen member items. Mr. Coppington has two items. I believe that they will be, require separate motions. So the first item is a request to ask the Town Management for options regarding a pause or reduction of town fees for businesses affected by COVID-19. Mr. Coppington?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. And I, and I'm looking at this, and what I intended, instead of town fees, was license fees and, and more to the point, typically annual fees. I know that in a couple, typically in late October, we, we vote on a fee schedule as a Board, and then we have our annual renewals come December, November, December time. I didn't bring this up earlier because we did not have a full Board, and we were still grappling with the state budget. So once we had a full Board, I thought it was appropriate to bring these forward. I have had discussions on and off over the years with different Board members and, and obviously the manager and the accountant on these items, and I thought that this would be a good time to at least explore some local relief. So that, that is the reason for my request.
Thank you, Mr. Coppington. So I just want to be clear that you're looking for support from the Board for the Town Manager to bring us back a report with options regarding a pause or reduction of the annual licensing fees for businesses. And it says affected by COVID-19.
Yes, which I would think would be pretty much everybody. So, yes, and it would be typically annual fees or fees that the Board of Selectmen adopt, yes. Obviously, it would be great if other committees or town departments that collect fees would be in a position to do that, but that's obviously entirely up to them as to what, what procedures they wish to follow.
And because we are on a tight timeline, I'll just ask the Town Manager, I know that that, you know, you've spoken with Mr. Carpenter about this. Is this something that you could, I mean, we would certainly want to know the financial impact. Is this something that you could have prepared for us for the September 28th meeting or? Or, I don't want to set a date, but we, as Mr. Carpenter pointed out, we'll be, we'll be taking votes on, well, in November, we take the votes on all liquor licenses because that vote has to be taken by the 30th day of November. And then the general license renewals are at the end of the year. And as Mr. Carpenter pointed out, the fee schedule is a vote that we take in October or November.
Correct. So the fee schedule is taken every October. So it'll be on your agenda again for October. I think I'd rather tie any recommendations to that because if you, just looking quickly at the fee schedule, a number of the fees on your fee schedule are established by Mass General Law. And some of them you can go up to and not exceed and some of them are set amounts. So we'll have to look at all the fees and see which ones are up to and which ones have any kind of, or lack of parameters under that amount. So if you normally charge 50, can you charge 25? So we have to do some research to see what you're able to do under Mass General Law and what you're not able to do. And I believe the liquor license, I think you have more leeway on that. I don't believe those fees are established by the License Commission other than the application fees, but some of the actual license fees are this board recommendation. So I don't know that we can have it for the 28th because that's only in two weeks, which would mean less than two weeks to get it on your agenda, which gets posted previous Thursday. So that, in 10 days, I don't know that we can review all of the fees. There are several of them. It's, I'm looking at it. And most of them, we just have to go back and look at the reference. So, you know, under these, you know, they were secondhand, pawnbroker, junk dealers, those licenses. We have to go back and verify against the general bylaw or the Mass General Law. So it is going to take some time to research it, but we can absolutely look at that.
Okay. And Mr. Carpenter, I just want to be clear that that was in the form of a motion to request it, to ask the town management for options to provide a report with options regarding a pause or reduction of the annual licensing fees for businesses affected by the COVID-19.
I can certainly make that as a motion. I didn't know what the board or board members' opinions were or it was basically a discussion item. So I'm certainly happy to make that motion. I think it's a good option, but again, I'm one member and thankfully we have five, so.
All righty. Well, I would certainly like to continue this discussion. So if Mr. Carpenter makes the motion, is there a second on this?
I would, I would second that.
We have a second by Mr. Breckham, so we're under discussion to ask the town manager for a report. Is there anyone else who wants to comment on this? Mr. Ren?
Just a question. I certainly support relief for those that need it. Do we have the ability to put any qualifiers on it to show a proof of hardship? Or is it, would it have to be you give relief across the board?
I would believe, Mr. Ren, that if we're, if it's action that the board is taking, yes, I believe we could put qualifiers on it. Because I don't, you know, with the licensing fees, I don't personally believe that every business was impacted equally. But to just say that without having the fee schedule in front of us to know what businesses are impacted, I think we would need a list. But I absolutely believe we could make an amendment to any motion and put a qualifier. Anyone else?
I just want to, through the chair, thank Mr. Carpenter for putting this motion on our agenda.
And that was Mr. La Liberty. So if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second on the floor. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Ren, vote yes. Mr. Breckham?
Yes.
And Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is a unanimous vote, Sharon. Thank you. And the second item, similar to this, is a request to ask town management for options regarding a pause or reduction of interest on tax payments plans for those experienced economic hardship due to COVID-19. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, and this is a similar item to the one above, but this would affect residents as well as others. And, you know, I like to think from the discussions we've had earlier that we do think that people in general do want to do the right thing. They don't, but circumstances with employment and other things, they may not be able to make that whole tax payment, but if they can keep current, this is not an event that they caused or any of us caused. And I just think personally for me to charge them taxed when they're already going through such a interest, I mean, on these items is, you know, you're just burying, burying them deeper in debt. So certainly I do believe and would support, you know, as Mr. Ren said, you know, proof of hardship is certainly necessary for these type of things, but.
So, thank you, Mr. Carpenter. So I'm just going to ask the town manager, I know that this is set by DOR, but I bet so much information coming through regarding COVID, but was there something that was put in place over the summer regarding this?
Through the chair, yes. If the board recalls, back on April 3rd, Governor Baker signed a law that provided temporary relief for municipalities and taxpayers. And it was a local option that gave the CEO and, in our case, the town manager of each municipality, the option to adopt this local option to extend due dates for real and personal property tax payments and to support waivers of interest on certain taxes. That law went into effect and it only specifically applied for bills that were due on or before, let's see, it was March 10th for the original bills. And then they extended the payment of those March 10th bills to June 29th, 2020. And they also extended the due date for applications for property tax exemptions to June 1st. And it was originally April 1st. So those dates were set in that law. So unless there is another law that provides for municipal tax relief, local option for municipalities, we're not allowed to do that. We can't waive interest and penalties on late fees without that. I checked maybe a week or so ago with the Mass Municipal Association Legislative Division to see if they were aware of any pending legislation that would change that going into FY21, because that only applied to FY20 bills. And right now, there was nothing pending, although the Legislative Division felt that there would likely be something forthcoming for this coming fiscal year that we're currently in with, again, a lot of those bills being due January and/or March. So right now, there's no mechanism to provide that type of a waiver.
Ms. Jacobson, is this, is this action that is only taken by the governor or did you say it's, the legislature is considering taking action?
Right now, there's no legislation pending, but the law that was passed was passed through the legislature and I believe it was a, it was a piece of legislation that the governor then signed. It was not an executive order or governor's order that didn't go through the legislature. This was actual legislation that was signed into law. And it was specific to the FY20 bills. So right now, as of, I don't know, a week or so ago, I'm not aware of any legislation that's pending to put this local option for fee waivers and penalty waivers right now. It doesn't mean there won't be legislation, but right now there is none.
Okay.
Mr. Kasnovich, are you aware, and maybe, maybe there is another mechanism, but is there another mechanism other than this law that allows us to waive interest and penalty and postpone taxpayers having to pay bills?
There is a hardship clause that allows for deferment of payment of property taxes, but you have to meet certain criteria and it's allowed for a period of five years. That was in place even pre-COVID-19, but that's limited. So I, they have to prove the hardship offhand. I don't know what qualifies an individual to defer those taxes for a period of time, but it is very specific. And we can make that known to the board. I can consult with our assessor, who has to prequalify those individuals and determine that they do meet that hardship and the deferral would apply. So we can get back to the board on those specifics to see if that opens up any opportunities for those who may be feeling this economic hit right now.
Mr. Carpenter, did you want to follow up with anything on that?
No, I think that that's exactly what I was asking for is options. And certainly, I'm not opposed at a future date, depending on what those options are, to ask the board for further action, even petitioning the legislature to come up with something. Because I think this relief is needed and I don't want to see another 2008 situation come through where we see residents and, because they can't afford to pay their taxes and there's no good alternative for them, so. But that's premature. So I would make a motion that we ask for that report and that's all I have.
Mr. Carpenter has made a motion to request a report from town management on options regarding a pause or reduction of interest on payment plans for those experiencing economic hardship due to COVID-19. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second it for discussion.
Mr. Breckham has seconded. Go ahead, Mr. Breckham.
I just, I'm kind of wondering, the town manager mentioned that we don't have that much leeway as far as the interest and penalties. I was kind of hoping that even if the interest had to stand, that maybe we could forgive the penalties or late fees or however you want to call it. I thought those are on a town level. So with the report that comes to us, if that could just get verified, or maybe the town manager already knows, but I was kind of hoping that those at least would be a separate item that maybe we could provide a little relief from that.
Through the chair, I can answer that now. The law that was passed in April provides a local option for waiving interest in late fees. Without that law, we don't have that authority. That's a different program than what Mr. Kasnovich was talking about, which would be deferring real estate tax payments, not the interest or the, if they're deferred, then they're not going to incur an interest or a late fee. So that's something that was in place prior to COVID. We do have some residents that have taken advantage of that, they were eligible and they will actually technically go on a payment plan for, I think Ed had mentioned, up to five years. That is not the interest in the fees. So I think, to your point, I think the motion should be changed from just saying that you're looking for a report on a reduction of interest in tax payments, because we don't have that authority to just say you're looking for a report on mechanisms for providing relief to residents on their real estate tax bills. Because, again, that we don't have any authority to provide relief on interest in late fees. That's, that has to be done legislatively. And that falls under DOR, but we can provide the report on this deferral program and who's eligible for that. Does that clarify it, Mr. Kasnovich? Is that correct?
You have to use your voice, Mr. Kasnovich, Sharon.
That would be correct.
Thank you. Mr. Carpenter, do you, you heard the town manager, do you want to amend your motion?
Sure. That works for me, however we get the information. And I appreciate the answers tonight, which I'm not surprised that with the manager and the CFO, that they have a lot of these answers at their disposal. I appreciate their knowledge.
And Mr. Breckham, on your second?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. And just under discussion, and thank you, Mr. Carpenter. That's why I had actually followed up with the town manager, because I too would support, if needed, you know, writing to the governor for, you know, an executive order or the legislature, whichever, wherever it fell, to provide relief to homeowners. Mr. Ren, did you, were you? No, okay, all righty. Is there anything else on this item?
Yeah, before we move on, Madam Chair.
Mr. La Liberty is speaking.
I just wanted to also comment on, Mr. Carpenter referenced it and then you did as well. I think that this might be something that we do want to write to the legislature about, either our local reps or the legislature as a whole. I appreciate that they allowed us to extend payments a while back, but it seems like we really didn't anticipate this going as long as it did. And people are continuing to feel hardships. So I think this may be something that we should go to the legislature or Representative Frost and Senator Moore about. So I think that that may be something in our next meeting to discuss in more detail.
Absolutely. We will put that on the next agenda. Is there anything else? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote again. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Ren, vote yes. Mr. Breckham?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, everyone. And is, I don't see anything else on the agenda on the Board of Selectmen member items. Does anyone have anything? No, seeing none.
Madam Chair, can I just, one last thing, I apologize. I don't mean to take over the meeting.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention a fundraiser and as we're talking about helping those in need, this is a difficult time to be in a charitable organization or a nonprofit organization having to raise funds. The Auburn Historical Society, which runs the museum on South Street, is having a spaghetti supper. It's a little different this year, it's all takeout. But if people are interested, it's Saturday, October 3rd. Pickup times vary between 4:30 and 6:00 at the Packer Church Church. Tickets are $10. Further information can be found either by calling them at 508-832-6856 or emailing them, auburnmuseum@verizon.net. So I just wanted to give them a shout out to do whatever we can to get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for reading that off, Mr. Carpenter. And so it gives me the opportunity, I spoke to Mr. La Liberty over the weekend and drafted him as a volunteer to help with the food. So if there are any other board members who want to assist with preparing the food and packaging it to go, please talk to me as we all do it as, I'm safe certified, so help with food, but any volunteers are always welcome. So thank you for, thank you for that, Mr. Carpenter.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I also talked to Mr. Carpenter about that and though we wanted to help out, we're not going to be around for that. And I spoke with another board member, Mr. Ren, who is president of the Auburn Youth and Family Services, and asked him if it would be okay if we bought, you know, meals and donated to Auburn youth and had the Auburn youth families be able to go and pick up a meal, which I think would be a treat for some of the families. So if anybody wants to support both the Historical Society and the Auburn youth, I think that's an awesome way to, you know, help out two people in the community and a great fundraiser. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anything else under member items? Seeing none, we have the minutes of August 12th, 2020 before you. Are there any corrections or omissions? That would be the three members, Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Breckham and myself. Seeing none, I'll just comment since Sharon is on the call. Pages and pages of minutes on a Zoom call, you did an excellent job, so thank you. You did an excellent job as always. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anything else before the board tonight? Alan to take the motion, Sharon?
So I'll move second.
Take the motion. Mr. Carpenter has seconded. Mr. Ren, this is a roll call vote again. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Breckham?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are adjourned. See everyone on the 28th. Thank you. Good night.